The entire time you're addressing the government body. We also have some speakers or interested individuals joining the meeting by video teleconference using the Zoom platform as published in our meeting notification. If you are in the Zoom audience, please keep your microphone muted. For those who are wanting to comment, please be following. For those joining via the Zoom app through your computer, please click on the raised hand icon to join us through calling feature, please press star nine. This will notify our moderator, Mr. Randy Dunster, that we have a comment from one of our virtual attendees. He would love to know if he wished to speak. I will then have him unmuted. When you speak, also please state your name and address. Do you now just join me for the question?
My pleasure to be here today in the United States of America and the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Sowinski, Mr. Weyman, Mr. James, President, Mayor Beckett, Mayor Beckett.
Presidents. And so we have three items on the Senate committee, first is good news September sixteenth twenty twenty five to the House Committee, second to approve the quarters new plans and approve the position claims. Several of the areas of September sixteenth twenty twenty five to August sixth twenty twenty five. And lastly, to approve the road complex parking lots Saturday, October eleventh, from nine a.m. to noon. Our electronics recycling event hosted by the heat Nebraska City Bureau. So you have Commissioner Raffold down for this, Mr. President. I'm going to move to ask you all two of the times.
All second.
Hold on.
Commissioner Cheney.
Yes.
Commissioner Weyman.
Yes.
Commissioner Sowinski.
Yes.
Mayor Beckett.
Yes.
For our new business, Southern Board, discussion slash action, we consider workforce housing tax and TIF finance.
According to Subon Construction Facility Manager, um, we were gonna have client wins, um, represent and explain to the council the utilization of workforce housing TIF. And I don't know if Andrew's on by his own.
In RW, I just remember that's in.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, so I'll let Andrew take it from here. I'm gonna be here for any questions.
Oh, Andrew, go ahead. Alright, good evening, members of the council. So, uh, yeah, talking a little bit about the difference of the workforce housing TIF. Um, I'd start off, you know, really the key difference, you know, you've done redevelopment projects with TIF. Um, the one, the one, really what the workforce housing piece does is it expands, um, the applicability of tax increment financing for housing development. Um, it's, it's, it's made to promote and incentivize getting workforce housing. Uh, workforce housing is defined, for our purposes, as ha- uh, construction owner occupied construction of, that's gonna cost three hundred thousand dollars or less to build. Or rental units, they're gonna cost two hundred and thirty-five thousand or less per unit to build. So that's, that's the, um, kind of the sizing we're looking at with workforce housing. But essentially what it does is if the CDA, or if the city council approves a workforce housing incentive plan, then when an applicant comes with a typical TIF project. Uh, the difference is you can use those, uh, basically all costs of building the homes are TIF eligible. Instead of just being the streets or the, the, um, typical public infrastructure, which is what we've seen. So the benefit there is if you're doing some infill housing, where there's some lots that need to be developed, but there's not those, um, typical TIF uses. Then you can still, uh, utilize TIF to build, to, to get some workforce housing in. So that's, um, I mean, that's the main benefit of what we're doing here. If you've got a typical subdivision, which you, which you've got in Nebraska City, you don't necessarily need the workforce housing TIF because you have those costs. But it has been, that was gonna be beneficial in a lot of communities. Um, and again, so it's, um, it's, we have those limits on the sizes when, when the developers come in. And, or the other ones, you can also do for substantial rehabilitation if the cost of that rehabilitation is fifty percent or more of the assessed value of a house. So that would be a, that would be a fall within that category. Uh, and then upper story housing is also included in the statute, um, building some apartments above your, you know, businesses, that, that would fall in. Um, there's really about, there's, I'd say four steps to, to get, uh, workforce housing program in place. First, uh, the city has to have a housing study currently within the last five years and sixty months. Um, so if you have that housing study, I believe you do. Then the next piece is you create a, uh, incentive plan, workforce housing incentive plan. That incentive plan, um, is, it can be, it can be very specific to, uh, you know, targeted goals of the city. Or it can be very broad, hey, we wanna, we wanna encourage workforce housing development and we wanna look at each project as they come and submit their TIF application. As, uh, we've done them both ways in different communities. Um, you could, you know, you can have rent requirements in there as far as restrictions on AMI. You could have different covenants part of your workforce incentive housing plan. Or again, you could leave that incentive plan kind of broad and, and we'll look at each project as they come. But, but the, but in order to utilize workforce housing incent- uh, workforce housing TIF, uh, you do have to have an incentive plan. And that plan, sort of like our redevelopment plan, if we were following that, that incentive plan, uh, when, when applicants come forward. Um, when we draft an incentive plan, then we have a public hearing. So we have the city council public hearing. And, uh, the only thing I would note there is that public hearing is, needs to be separate from a, a hearing on the redevelopment plan or a project itself. So again, once we get the housing incentive plan, if this is something that you're interested in, uh, we just go through the public hearing. You, uh, approve that public hearing, uh, sorry, you approve that plan at the public hearing, and then you have that incentive plan in place. Um, and then, really, at that point, you now have a workforce housing TIF, uh, you're eligible to utilize TIF for workforce housing. Then, uh, whether it's city driven or applicant driven, then they would come and, they would apply for a TIF in the exact same way they normally would look at the TIF application. Again, the only difference is all the costs of construction then become eligible for, uh, you, you can use TIF for those costs. The big difference on that, you know, when a project comes forward with workforce housing versus just, uh, I guess we'll call our typical TIF projects. Is that there needs, one of the traditional findings on each project is that there can't be, um, if, the developer can't be unjustly enriched. So the idea is if you're building housing, um, there, there's a little more financial, like a return on investment, uh, findings they need to present in the application. Hey, if we're gonna sell our home from this, but we're getting TIF off of this, here's our return, we're not gonna be unjustly enriched. And so it, it still is a little bit, um, you know, it's kind of like what we've seen with the TIF projects. There's a little bit of room for flexibility, but these more specifically, we're looking for more, uh, kind of dialed in financially, just to make sure. The idea being if, if the city is allowing a, uh, someone to use TIF for the, the actual construction, uh, we wanna make sure that that's, that they're not being unjustly enriched. Typically, you're gonna see that, hey, if we're, if it's gonna cost us three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to build the house, we are, or it could be this case, if it costs us three hundred thousand dollars to build the house. We're gonna sell for two seventy, uh, where, you know, we need to, we need to cover the other part somewhere else, whatever that is. Um, but that's really, I mean, that's where the key difference on the application side. Once you, once you've got an incentive plan in place, it doesn't require you to do any projects. You still go through the, the, uh, TIF, uh, application review and approval process. And again, but it allows you to, it allows us potential flexibility to utilize the actual TIF for, uh, additional housing costs. Um, it's, that, that's a, that's my, my five minute summary of, of the workforce housing TIF program and what that does. Um, in addition to what you're already can, what you already can accomplish with tax increment financing. Um, but I'm happy to answer any questions or I can talk more about it, 'cause I thought I'd start there. And, uh, let me know, what question do you have?
Andrew, right, but is this, is this something new that was recently passed and why it wasn't incorporated, incorporated into our plan previously?
Yeah, it's relatively new, it's a few years old now, um, so we're just starting to see a lot of the, you know, some of the cities, uh, starting to implement this. Um, so it's becoming more common, but again, not, I would say, not, I mean, it's less common than TIF. So, you know, that's kind of usually starting a tax increment financing program and then, and then eventually you're, you're looking at workforce housing. But we are starting to see more and more communities, they can try, you know, at least get the incentive plan in place. And then, uh, then they can use it if it comes about. But it's, I forget when it was passed, but within, you know, a few years ago.
Okay, and I'm assuming that three hundred thousand is limited by statute because NNDD just raised their workforce housing to three fifty?
Yeah, and it's, it's, the statute actually says, I think it says two seventy or two seventy-five, but NDD is supposed to, they're supposed to raise the, you know, the workforce housing levels every year. The last time they were done for TIF purposes was several years ago to get up to about three hundred thousand dollars. And I don't know why they've not tracked it the same as their, their other workforce housing levels. I, I just don't know the answer to that, but it is, it's subject to change. It says it can be done annually, it hasn't been done annually, but, uh, right now, the limit is three hundred.
Okay, and you still have to meet the but four test on this and also?
Yeah, and the, and the biggest part there is, is your but four test. Again, this is probably a little more in depth, because what we typically, what we, what we've typically asked for in these, because, because the statute, well, your incentive plan will also say. The statute says we have to make sure there's a finding that there's not been any unjust enrichment. So again, it's, I kinda see that as the same as the but four test, but for TIF, this isn't gonna, this project won't happen. But even then, um, it's, we expect to, with these workforce housing, a little more financial detail. And usually that's the, you know, the house developer will say, it's gonna cost me this much to build, I need to make my, you know, my typical profit on, on a home is, is this. So I'm thirty thousand dollars short, or whatever that number is. And that's, and so if you give me TIF, I'm not making an extra for thirty thousand as I would otherwise, I, and I get the same. And it, it can be different, it can look different. Again, if you're doing rental housing, you might say, I would normally rent these out for X. But I'm willing to reduce it to Y to get that lower AMI and make it more affordable, but if that's why I need TIF, 'cause I won't get the same return. So while that number's different, it is, I'd say, a kind of a heightened but four test, even for what we usually do.
Is there a limitation on the duration of the bond or the loan?
Still fifteen years.
Fifteen years. And can an individual home, homeowner, home buyer, home builder do this as well?
Yeah, this can be, this can be one, you know, single homes, uh, it can be a developer doing multiple homes. But yeah, you could have a, an individual homeowner, either that's building a new home. Or again, like I said, if you're doing a fifty, uh, a substantial rehabilitation, fifty, fifty percent of all the value, that would also count. Um, again, it's, I, I guess part of the question there is gonna be the, um, unjust enrichment question. If you're just building, if you're rehabbing your own home, and I'm not sure, I've never done one like that, but it would be the same analysis. But where we've seen this really be effective, um, in some communities is you may have, like I mentioned before, and, and you, as you've done. If you, if you bring in a subdivision of a few houses and they're building a new street, well, you have plenty of TIF uses. But if you've got a couple vacant lots, um, downtown, you know, in, in, internally, you know, you're just gonna infill homes, because all the infrastructure's already there. But it still is pretty, um, it, it's difficult to build those, they still cost too much. And so there's, that's where we really see the TIF, uh, the workforce housing TIF be beneficial, is being able to infill a couple vacant lots. Um, the other thing I would note, just that on that three hundred thousand dollar limit on housing, that does not include site acquisition, demolition, that's really just the building after the, after the.
Okay. All the questions I have. Any questions, Mr. Randy?
So I guess I'm asking the mayor and city council to move forward working with client wins to, uh, bring back an incentive plan to consider for the city. I think there's a lot of flexibility, I'm not actively working with any developer, but we have been, you know, had inquiries, you know, if we have this in place. I feel as if I always had this in place for quite a long time, and, and so that's where some inquiries are coming from. Um, so I feel like it would give us some flexibility and maybe some product that we can get out there, um, you know, some developers so chooses this tool. Um, I feel the good part is, is, you know, it's up to the, up to the council to, you know, approve in a project. Just because we put this in place doesn't mean, you know, we approve all the projects, it's case by case basis, so. So if we could move forward with bringing back an incentive plan, I've looked at it, you know, Andrew's provided me with a few, um, different community incentive plans that we've kind of reviewed. But, uh, just kind of pick up the pieces from there and try to do something for Nebraska City through all, through, you could consider.
And so this was, we would have to pass this after we have been provided our new housing set.
We're still within our five years and should have our updated one, um. They have it, I feel as if we can do that, um, I'll let the attorney speak on that, but I feel like we're gonna be in that five year window no matter what. We are gonna have a brand new one here by March.
Yeah, right now, you're still within the five years, so there's no issue either way, okay?
So Marty, as you mentioned, that this has been used to, like, fill in lots throughout the cities, throughout the cities. Our main intention, just for the critical hills, southern?
No, no, and it's, it's, I, I feel it could be a tool for some multifamily out there, but I, I feel this is, infill's just kind of, the lowest hanging fruit to utilize this. Um, get the infill done, you know, I, I feel like that model works great for that, um, that it's not being provided in the country. Yeah, and, and again, it's case by case basis, you know, um, somebody wants to utilize some multifamily TIF at the critical sales, I, you know, we'd probably consider that. But I mean, there's a future decision that the county will make, depending on what the project looks like and what the pro forma looks like, you know. They can kind of discount things on the next one, I think we would probably do that, but not every developer's gonna wanna use it.
Andrew, can you kind of just, like, put together the basic pros and cons of doing something like this for a city? So we have it on record and everyone can understand exactly what this means by doing this?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I don't necessarily see any cons to it, because, um, if, as we've already said, just said, I mean, if you approve the housing incentive plan. You still are looking, it still is gonna be a TIF, TIF application, or some cases you're just kind of case by case. So if it's a project that doesn't make sense for any reason, um, it doesn't re, it doesn't, it doesn't obligate you to do anything. It just opens up some possibilities. Um, I suppose that, I mean, I suppose if you're not intending to do anything, or if you never use it, then, then the, you know, the question is why'd you get an incentive plan in place? But it, it doesn't really hurt, there's no, that meant, so in that sense, I'd say there's no negatives. Um, and the, you know, the positive becomes, yeah, those cases when, um, one, you know, one of two things, you know, we, where I guess I would typically see it is. The costs just don't quite work, or maybe then the, again, you know, when we look at a TIF project, we are, we're using specific, TIF dollars for specific costs. But, but a developer's just saying, I need to, I need to make this pencil out, I need to make it work, and if it doesn't work, it doesn't matter where my dollars are coming from. So a lot of times, you know, sometimes this'll really work out, this'll help them out, you can use a little bit of that. If you're, it, it adds a lot more flexibility.
Um. But can you explain where the TIF dollars come from, so everybody understands?
Oh, yeah, 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 so it's, it, again, we've got, um, with, with any TIF project here, so you've got a, you know, you've got a, uh, you start with, well, here's a basic bear lot. And you're gonna build a house on that, so you had a bear lot, um, so you, whenever you use TIF, you are taking, um, the tax, the pre-development tax dollars on that lot. So assessed to whatever that is, seven thousand dollars. Um, then that, that amount, uh, basically the idea is we'll keep that amount the same for that fifteen year duration. So the taxing jurisdictions continue to get their proportion of what taxes is for the project. The tax increment, the incremental amount of taxes that is created by developing, by building that new building, in this case, that new house, um, for fifteen years. That is going to be used to pay off costs of the project. After that fif- and, so again, in this case, it's just, it's really development costs, it's, it's building costs. Um, and so then after fifteen years, it goes back on the tax rolls and, uh, it's treated the same as always. But, but for that fifteen year, basically, you're deferring that incremental tax that's created for fifteen years to help pay for what's being built. Um, so the city, they are, again, you know, the city's not outing dollars, they're just deferring what doesn't exist now. With the theory being it's not going to exist without the help of TIF. And so, um, using that fif- you know, using that TIF for fifteen years gets the, gets the building built. And then after that, it goes back on the tax rolls and we've got the, the new house in this case. And, um, if, if the dollars, again, if, if the amount comes in lower, the city's not on the hook for anymore. It's all, it still is, it's, you're only paying now what comes in through the taxes. Um, in a case like this for homeowners, when they're paying their tax bill, I think now, it used to, your tax bill used to not look any different. I think now there's actually a line item that shows that you, that there's TIF on that property, but it doesn't change the, it does not change the amount they're paying for their taxes. So if you're, if you, if a builder comes in and builds a home, sells that, a home to the homeowner, their taxes are gonna be the same no matter what. So it makes no, um, makes no difference for that homeowner. Uh, but it, it just basically, when that goes to the county, uh, that, the county divert the incremental value back to the CDA, then back to the redevelopers to pay for those costs.
So that's where I'm kind of following Andrew, I apologize. So developer builds a house, sells the house, how much of that taxes does the city not see in trying to help the homeowner pay the property taxes? Is it just the portion that costs to develop the land?
Well, I mean, on a, on a, on a new home, it'd be, I mean, substantially all of it except for the base value of the lot. So the way it works on any project is there, there will, you'll, we'll divide the taxes on any tax year. So, and then, so the taxes, so let's say, let's say, for example, um, two thousand twenty-six, the home is, a home is constructed. So whatever, and then, so then, since the home is constructed in two thousand twenty-six, that, it assess value, the assessor will compute the values. We look at the values every year, January first of every year. So January first of two thousand twenty-seven, that's when the assessor's gonna say, okay, there's new value on that property. So then, whatever the value was in two thousand twenty-six, the taxes, basically that's frozen in time effectively for the next fifteen years for the city, for the county, for the school district. And then anything new that was created in two thousand twenty-seven, which is, in the case of a bear lot, to a home, it's booked with the value. But whatever that value is, that incre- you know, is used to pay off costs for fifteen years. But it's a, it's whatever the, the county assessor does, then we file the notice to divide taxes, and the county assessor basically says, okay, whatever the previous year was, whatever that value was. We're just gonna keep that value the same for the next fifteen years for city, county, all the taxing jurisdictions and purposes. And the incremental value on top of that, we're sending back to the CDA.
Well, it's just like regular TIF, so if, if we had a ten thousand dollar lot and a builder came in and said, I can build this. Say to them, they, any, they would get their plans assessed and the assessor would say that was like a three hundred thousand dollar house. A lot's still ten thousand dollars, so that's three hundred and ten. But we approved this TIF package for fifteen years. The builder would buy the lot, he's still going to pay, split disbursement on the assessment, he's going to pay taxes on that ten thousand dollar lot. Cause that's what it was before we approved it there. And that's gonna keep going for the next fifteen. Now that three hundred thousand dollar house is built, if we did a whole payment TIF, so that's, what we created out, that's fifteen hundred dollars from three hundred. Whatever the tax rate is for that year. So that three hundred though, they're going to take a bond or a loan out, while we are going to use NFT and then we'll pay it through. But the assessor will send that bill and the builder will then pay, that payment will go to pay off that bond on that three hundred thousand instead of all of the taxing entities under our burden. So that schools, Karen, us, Southwest Green, airport building, all those tax dollars on that three hundred on that increments, now the increase is three hundred. For the next fifteen years, that amount will go to pay off the loan instead of going to the tax coffers of each of those tax.
So what Mr. President?
That's exactly what I was gonna say, so if you look at, again, when you're talking about a bear lot, and I, and I'll just use, just, if you, let's just say, let's use a two percent levy, cause that's easier math. Um, if you had a thirty thousand dollar valuation, um, at a two percent levy, that's six hundred dollars. So that lot is gonna be, you're, you're paying, whoever owns it's paying six hundred dollars in taxes every year. Uh, and that would continue. And so the idea is, okay, if, if that's, if that's a thirty thousand dollar lot, um, they're, they're just gonna keep paying six hundred dollars a year in taxes. Now, they come in and they build a house, or, you know, whatever they're building, and that value goes up to three hundred thousand dollars. So now they're paying six thousand dollars a year, but the incremental value is that two hundred and, two hundred and seventy thousand, because it was thirty thousand and now it's two hundred and seventy thousand more. So out of that six thou- they, they still pay all their taxes directly to the county, the, the entire six thousand dollars on three hundred thousand dollars. But then the county divides it based on the previous value, in this case, in this example, that thirty thousand dollars. They're gonna pay, the six hundred dollar portion of the tax gets paid out as would otherwise, and then the two thousand, four hundred dollars, uh, goes to pay off those TIF eligible costs for fifteen years. And then after fifteen years, it all goes, uh, the, the six thousand dollars is all back on the tax. So homeowner still pay, I mean, homeowner still pays the, the full tax bill, and then at the county level, they're dividing the taxes. So the ci- so the city, county, uh, and all the taxing jurisdictions are not seeing the full value, they're only seeing that, uh, pre-development portion for fifteen years.
And that's, that's kind of my concern is, we're still taking away tax dollars from the, from the school, the county does, you know. But if you're trying to look at it as an incentive visor, this housing program that's still fairly young. So that's where I'm at in terms of, is this, is it, is it the right move, is it too early a move, you know?
In regards to?
We're crawling down, talking crisis hills, we're, you know, we're talking infill and apartment complex, um, just any type of workforce housing.
Right.
So, you know, again, it's, it's case by case basis, you know, we can take the project or not. But, uh, I, I, I'm looking at this as a whole, anywhere in the redevelopment, you know, area is, you know, we have this tool available. You see what somebody would like to put on there, if you like it, we approve it, if you don't like it, we don't approve it.
These are projects that may not have been housing. For sure. And so you're, each project we have to look at, uh, it may be a vacant lot that's, has sat vacant anywhere in the city for years and years and years. And it's holding very tax on that vacant lot. But a builder, a developer, or someone with ambition comes in and says, hey, I brought my numbers, I can't quite make it happen. But if I can get over the hump on this last fifty thousand, then I can make your numbers matter for it. But if we're looking at someone, and we would have to look at taxes like that separately, because we are, we're taking away for fifteen, if they wanna do it for ten years or fifteen years, but at max fifteen years. We are taking away that incremental taxing, so away from all the taxing entities. So it might be that, well, lots seem to be selling okay, and we're doing great for crisis sales, so we don't need to incentivize that, I'll take them as tax. It may be that the multifamily lots sit there, the developers, every developer we have in says, I can't make the numbers, make the, or it's probably. But I can make the numbers happen at the cross, across the road, round my lot, I'm like, I'm, I use so much under TIF.
Andrew, do we have the, the power to reduce it, or do you propose less than fifteen years, or is that just fifteen or nothing?
No, you can, yeah, you can do, I mean, you could approve for ten, ten years, you could approve a, you could approve a smaller amount under, I mean, when we look at these projects, kind of calculate the maximum we think you'll hit. There's no reason the city has to do the maximum. Um, so yeah, you have, you have the authority to do less than, you know, whatever proportion you feel, you know, fits that project for sure. And that's probably even more appropriate in the workforce housing context, because again, there, there we really, by statute, have to show the ROI calculation. Uh, to make sure there's no un, un, uh, unjust enrichment, uh, which we're kind of looking at always, but more specifically in this case. So they might say, yeah, this'll generate fifty thousand dollars in TIF, but for this project, I need thirty, and here's why. And this is, you know, so it, it's probably a, a little more, uh, we're, we're, we always have to be a little more cautious on the, on the workforce housing side. Um, the other, the other, I guess, the other way to think the thing about it, not that this would be the case, but just, you know, another way to look at the incentives. Um, I use the city of Lincoln as an example. What they do is with, uh, their TIF is they'll say, if you're gonna build multifamilies, and they only allow it in certain parts of the towns, they've kind of set up some rules that are more restrictive than they need to. Okay, well, great, we, we, we really are encouraging more affordable, so we'll give you TIF, but you need to put in, you know, covenants that restrict rent to whatever, eighty percent of the AMI. You know, affordable eighty percent AMI, things like that. So not that that would be something you guys. So not that that would be something you guys necessarily want to do, but there are, but there's flexibility to look at that broadly and say, we're gonna do that as a blanket policy. Or again, every single one of these projects is gonna come before, before the council to be approved or, or not. And so you can do it case by case, you can do it, you can, so if, you know, if there's other covenants or other incentives that make sense, then that's always an option as well. But, but as far as dollars, you can just, you can definitely, you know, do ten years of TIP, or, or cap it at a certain amount, or whatever, whatever makes the most sense.
I'll make a motion to direct city staff to work with Pine Williams to prepare an incentive plan, workforce housing TIP plan for the city council.
I'll second the motion. Motion second for the discussion. Would you turn on the motion? Any discussion? Will call please. Commissioner Wayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Commissioner Ososki?
Yes.
Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Marty. Appreciate all of that. Item five, discussion slash action regarding your request to vacate alley located at eleven seventeen eleventh avenue.
Marty, so what construction facility manager, so we had a request from Dan Jessica Hopper to vacate the alley located at one 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 seven eleventh avenue. They wanted to build a barrage there at their location. So city staff and NCU staff has no issues with the vacation. We would have to bring back in ordinance at the next meeting.
And then here, if you'd like to talk to?
I'll motion that we approve the request to vacate the alley located at eleven seventeen eleventh avenue.
Would you second the discussion? Will call please. Commissioner Ososki?
Yes.
Commissioner Wayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Item six, discussion slash action regarding your request to create a monitor prohibiting the item of train for NCU units. All tied up with also items of discussions slash action to approve the letter of support for Union Pacific North of Southern Railroad merger. Both those items, we were trying to get a hold of through the Union Pacific government relations individual, he's out right now, but Perry and I have been looking at it for tomorrow, so next week, so. Item on the table, this is, this is, Commissioner's, for, for, and a bill for the NCU's, whatever it would be on this request. Item seven, discussion slash action regarding the request to officially recognize the formation of America two fifty two. Is this for the country or for Nebraska?
Lisa Walker, twenty-one ten fifth avenue. Today I'm coming to represent a group of local citizens who have gathered to create a committee called America two fifty Nebraska City. This group is made up of Laura Seiman, Jim Coon, Lucy Little Sharp, Carrie Godsey, Tammy Harch, Doug Freely, Sarah Hope, and myself. We are asking to be recognized as the official Nebraska City Committee, formally planning local events and celebrating America's two hundred and fifty anniversary. By formally recognizing this committee as the official local planning body, we will have formal legitimacy to the committee's work, be able to apply for and receive funding through state, federal, and private grant opportunities that require municipal endorsement, and encourage collaboration with local organizations, schools, businesses, and residents to ensure inclusive and meaningful programming.
I have a motion that we approve the request to officially recognize formation of America two fifty two.
I'll second. Motion second for the discussion. Will call please. Commissioner Wayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Ososki?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
And I suppose every once in a while, you guys would come back to us, know how it's going?
Absolutely.
Thank you, and thank you to all the folks that volunteered. Item eight, discussion slash action to submit a grant request for fifty-six thousand dollars to supplement insurance claim funding to replace the roofs on the house and barn at Wildwood.
So back in twenty twenty-three, we had hail damage, and we were reimbursed for some of that damage. This is above, I think that the corporation implied it a lot in what was a lot of my insurance, but this is just an amount maybe to make up to replace that roof.
Marty, so what construction facility manager? Yes, that is correct, but also they're wanting to go to kind of a composite old look, kind of like they put on a stone cabin down there. That wood-shaped roof is just, or it's just wood shingles. Just raccoons love it, and they dig a hole in it nonstop, and so trying to change the product on that roof is part of the increased cost also. Any questions?
But we'd be doing away with raccoon habitat.
I hope there's a place for them.
You're right.
I'll make a motion to submit a grant request to supplement insurance funding to replace the roofs on the house and barn at Wildwood.
Motion second for the discussion.
Mark's calling me. I'm gonna have to tap out.
Yes.
Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Item nine, discussion slash action regarding the audit services agreement on this. One four twenty-five. Same companies we did last year, same, probably the same team.
Yeah, we, we had the same. This staff, they do an excellent job.
Okay. The prime minister statement on the city, we have to include the revenue expenditures and LBA forty, thirty-four thousand four hundred and fifty. Is that what we have? And also still going to be utility expenditures.
Yeah. It's called, the discussion is on that.
The word already, for the public works already passed that. I'm thinking.
But they're planning on using this.
I think that we'll talk about it tomorrow, actually.
Also, I, I vote that we approve the agreement for this year's audit, audit service agreement with four risk processes. Azos, how do you pronounce it?
Awesome.
Motion second for the discussion. Commissioner Wayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Commissioner Ososki?
Yes.
Mayor Bennett?
Yes. Item ten, discussion slash action regarding the employee HRA plan. There's only change, there's a change in the joke.
The, the three bullet points in the agenda packet. Roll shape the chain. One thousand dollars, two thousand, two thousand and ten dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve the employee HRA plan documents.
I'll second the motion. Motion second for the discussion. Will call please. Commissioner Ososki?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Commissioner Wayden?
Yes.
Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Item eleven, discussion slash action regarding the determination of a memorandum of understanding between the city and Nebraska City Veterans Memorial Building Project.
Just so the MOU is established, while the renovations are underway and all the roads are done, the MOU is basically obsolete, but there is still a lease here that we have with the building. This is just basically sunset of that MOU.
But great. We have made one, Veterans Memorial Building Project, Roya and John, Perry and Mary Joan. And they presented us with this and explained the construction MOU has run its course. The only thing I liked in the construction MOU is that Veterans Memorial did come to the council to give updates. That was on the MOU, that's not on the lease. They, they don't think their board would be against the chairman to come back to report out to us, but they acted that you had been to the lease because there's no reporting requirement for that at least. I think we're gonna work on that a bit. To add some depth. I must say, I did sign that I had received the letter because it's all my stamps, but this, this MOU would be the term in the reverse. I just need a vote to accept the termination.
I'll motion that we accept the termination of a memorandum of understanding between the city and Nebraska City Veterans Memorial Building Project.
I'll second. Motion second for the discussion. Will call please. Commissioner Wayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Ososki?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheney?
Yes.
Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
I had mentioned previously, I'm tailing nine of twelve, so the votes to be done is brought back to the county. Item thirteen, discussion slash action regarding the FY twenty-five twenty-six budget. Since last council meeting, the only action that took place on September eighteenth, city administrator and our treasurer, three of us attended the county's in-class argument. They gave an opportunity for citizens to speak about their cost of property tax. It was at Syracuse that the Perry-Barns building. Approximately a hundred people in attendance, several people spoke that night. The folks had had to speak, and the county has run it for the last three years, so they had to be there. But this was the first time in three years that a local county has had to speak as a representative. So they exceeded their two point eight percent growth, so they spoke, Syracuse spoke, Almira had been at, school board district spoke, and the high school. About a hundred folks over there, there was only two that got up and spoke that I recall, the Nebraska City residents. One brought up that there was ten past events when I moved in Cincinnati, but not seen as much, but I think I clarified that with him in his question, because most of it was road projects that he wasn't aware of. And then the other individual wanted to go, possibly there was other means of taxing that we could look at for when I explained the bill's role and availability, take use, occupation tax, other forms of tax, but a city can't just levy a new tax. We have to have a statute allowing us to use it. And those were the only comments from Nebraska City folks. Rest of it is a lot of ag stuff on the county, seven folks questioning the Almira school district. That city, that hearing is set up so that it was prior to budget submission. There ain't nothing for the brought back to recall in a meeting with you all that I heard that night. The lawyer James, by the way, the council's planned the budget, we submitted our budget by beginning of the month, as we're required to, the state. And so I told the first, we were operating on this. A new budget that is ten percent less funded than what they were last year. Ten percent down less budgeted, but we make it work. Our department heads are ready to make it happen. Any other questions on the FY twenty-five twenty-six present? Okay, there's no action to be completed, we're now, I was about to refer to it. The ongoing forward adjournment continues to be filed for each week, so chief, I hope all the activities are running great. I hope somebody wasn't, was hit. I'm excited, I'm going with.